The Mayor and City Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and to limit the time used to present your remarks, three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the Mayor and City Council and not to any councilor specifically. It is at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. And for those who are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Thank you. Now is the time for Mayor, Council, and Administrator comments. And I wanted to take a moment and thank Mr. Lamer for his contributions to the Council over the past several years. I didn't count them up. You probably know by heart.
Ten.
Ten years. Ten years. So it's really been a joy and an honor to serve with you, and I think you've done a really good job for the city of Marshalltown, all of the voters, and thinking to the future. I remember specifically being thankful as I drive on West Olive for the changes you made to that plan, and I do think of you often when I drive that route.
Good.
And I'm thankful for you and your input on that. So come back anytime. You're welcome. Bring cupcakes, too, if you want. We'll take those. And be sure to keep in touch and enjoy retirement from the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know you have a few comments, too.
I wanted to make a couple of comments, and it's just about, I've heard a couple, three presentations lately about housing and growth development and stuff in Marshalltown. With what we've approved here at the Council lately, there's going to be about 300 new units of low-cost housing developed here in Marshalltown in the next couple, three years. I think we're a Midwest town, and I think we're a, we want to be more than a low-cost housing town. I think we need to, Council needs to think really hard about helping some developers build some $200,000 to $250,000 houses for the other end, because the development rules, the way they're written today, a developer has to put out a lot of money, millions of dollars actually, to get all the infrastructure in place before they can even build a house. And I think we, the city, need to be the big brother and help get this started and help finance some of that work. Our neighbors, State Center's done it, and it's working really well. LaGranne's done it. It's working really well. So I think we need to take a look at that next. We've got enough low cost in the mill now. Let's take a look at the next, the next bunch, or the next standard, and we need to help those guys build those houses. That's what I'd like to see you do next. That's what I'd like to see done next. That's it. Thank you for the kind words. I'm, I didn't think I'd say this, but I do. I think I'll miss being up here on Monday nights, even if some of my comments weren't what everybody appreciated. But I think, I think I gave the Marshalltown Water Works 31 years, and I've been here 10, so I've given Marshalltown 41 years, so it's my turn to take a couple of years to myself. So thank you, and thank, thank the voters for putting me here, I think. No, I do. And, and I wish you all well, and I know you'll do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Lamer.
Thank you.
Are there other Council comments? Okay. City Administrator?
I think we want to invite Michelle up to introduce our new planner.
Thank you. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director, and we'll do our best, Leon, to achieve those goals. And I think, you know, it is really exciting that we have a lot of market rate units actually do, are coming online compared to just the 50 affordable housing units that we have coming up. So I wanted to take a moment to introduce Caleb Knutson. Caleb is our new city planner here in Marshalltown, and so this is his official second full week on the job after starting with us a few days prior to that. And he's really been picking up on a lot of, a lot of things very quickly. We've gotten him toured around town, working on development projects already, and already doing a lot of permitting and things like that. So he's a great addition to our team, and I wanted to introduce all of you and to the public so that you could see who you're talking to on the other end of the phone now, when, when you come into our office. So I'll still be around answering lots of questions and helping him out, but just wanted to introduce so you could put a face to a name as you're starting to see him more and more. He'll be taking over the Plan Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment Meetings in time here, and occasionally presenting to you as counsel as well. I'll still be your main primary contact, but feel free to get to know him, stop him by, and have a little chat, so.
Welcome, Caleb.
Thank you.
Welcome. Your, Your Honor, I forgot, I forgot the most important thing of everything. As you guys know, I've teased the city a lot about not being able to buy a cup of coffee or something for us. So over by the door is a box of, of pretty good little cupcakes. I hear they've already been tried, and they went over really well. Just help yourself before you go tonight and enjoy it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anything else before? Okay. All right. Let's see. We're taking item three and item four off of the consent agenda for some discussion after, but I will now entertain a motion to approve the rest of the items on the consent list.
So moved. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. And Madam Clerk, when you're ready, roll call.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the items that were just approved?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the minutes for December 9th, and the bill lists in the amount of $4,522,827.05, receipt of the building report for November. Resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing sale and disposal. 1997 Chevy dump truck, and 1998 Chevy dump truck, 1999 Chevy with a plow, 2000 Chevy dump truck with plow, and two 2001 Chevy dump trucks with plows. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 International Dump Trucks for the price of $158,847 and $189,657 from O'Halleran International for Houston Street Department. Resolution approving completion and accepting the senior citizens building demolition project with final project cost in the amount of $207,557.04. Resolution approving salary adjustment for City Administrator Jessica Kinzer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, back to item three. I'll entertain a motion for, to approve Resolution 2019-330, authorizing a refund of sewer fees to JBS for the activated sledge plant in the amount of $50,556.44.
I'll move.
Okay. It's been moved for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And discussion. I think that there was just a request for an explanation.
Yeah. I didn't include a memo because the, the resolution really kind of told the story of it. JBS made some changes to their activated sledge plant back in 2015, which removed a sanitary sewer connection. And it was only just recently that that was actually caught, that they had continued to be billed for that sewer connection, even though it no longer existed. And so JBS staff worked with our staff to verify what an amount was, and so the amount of $50,556.44 has been verified as our staff of what was billed to them going back to March of 2015.
Okay. Any questions?
It's fine. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. And number four, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2019-331, accepting and awarding the quote "for repairing the roof on the grandstand at 905 East Main Street for the city of Marshalltown, Iowa," in the, in the amount of $80,068.
So move.
Okay. Is there a second? Second? All right.
I'll, I'll start out with this explanation because I had the exact same question for Justin last week as we were putting the agenda together. So the grandstand actually did receive some insurance proceeds related to tornado damage and six, over $16,000. That was just for some minimal damage that could be seen after the tornado. Ultimately, what we have found, and what the public work staff has found, is there is actually way more damage than that, and there's a lot of significant leaking which needs to be repaired, as our salt is currently being stored in there, and street department vehicles will be stored in there once the salt is, is back out. So just so you all know, I will be submitting this to insurance and asking that they reimburse the, the difference between this cost and then the $16,000 plus that they had already given us. And, but if, if they don't reimburse us, it's still a project that we, we need to do. Any remaining difference between insurance funds and any cost for the project would be coming out of the road use tax fund.
Okay. Any questions?
Is, is this, is this just that portion that has metal on it now, or is this going to cover the whole seating area, or the old seating area?
Rick Leg, Street Superintendent, it is the entire portion. They, they did just the, the small portion right now, but it's, without going all the way to the top, the water is still cascading down and getting underneath, which, like Jessica said, that's-
So the entire surface will be metal?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope. That's-
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Could I ask one question? Why did we use road use tax rather than building fund tax?
Because it's housing, street vehicles, and street-related things, so we can use road use tax for it because it's related to the function.
That's one street we can't fix, though.
Okay. We're up to motions, and let's see here. I'll take a motion to approve fiscal year and 2021 budget schedule, the budget schedule, including the special meetings.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. We do need to decide on the special meetings on February 3rd and February 27th, if you want the meeting at noon or at 5:30.
It would help me to keep it at 5:30. Hmm, just a minute. Just a minute. I have other meetings at 5:30.
I'm a noon person.
You a noon person?
I don't, I mean-
My only question is if they're at noon, are we expecting the meeting to be no longer than an hour?
Can you keep it to, under an hour?
That would be difficult on February 3rd because we're talking about the general fund.
So I can't promise-
Anything over an hour, I guess I would prefer that to be at a 5:30 meeting.
Do you want to mix it up and have the 3rd be at 5:30, and then, what was the date of the other one?
February 17th.
Oh, 17th.
And that's a, a public hearing and adoption of resolution, so that one should-
I would prefer that one at noon.
That one'd take very long.
We have the one on, on the 17th at noon. Everybody?
Say it again.
The February 3rd meeting, we could have at 5:30 because it'll probably go long. And then February 17th, which is the third Monday, we could have at noon because it'll be a little shorter. Oh, oh, we have another voice to hear from. I forgot.
It's a public hearing, Stephanie.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have publics available at noon.
I think we probably have about as many public available at noon as we do at 5:30 on a given day, but what do you all think?
I would go down as preferring 5:30, but that's me.
Okay. Uh, anybody else feel strongly either way?
Consensus, 5:30, 5:30's okay with me.
Okay. All right. We'll keep it.
Both, both days. Okay.
That's fine. Will that work for you, Mr. Thompson? Okay. Great. 5:30, both days.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I think we have a motion and a second, and we're ready for roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Great. Okay. On to resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-336, to approve the facade grant application for 116 West Main Street. That's the east side of the building. Their motion?
So move.
I'll move.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and discussion.
Hi, I'm Deb Millizer. I'm with the Marshalltown Central Business District, 116 East Main Street. I'm sorry. I-
That's okay. Definitely use the microphone.
This is my maiden voyage, so I'm probably going to stumble a lot. Please be kind to me. Some grace, too, would be awesome. And this is Julie Shasso.
Hi, I'm Julie Shasso. I'm the owner of the Optical Center at 116 West Main.
You need, you need to get a little closer to the mics. There you go.
Okay.
You probably want to stand right in front of it.
Okay. We're gonna, we're, I'll, I'll do the most-
There you go.
Okay.
Now I can hear you better.
Okay. Well, we are here this evening to request a facade incentive grant in the amount of $12,500 for the Optical Center. If this were to be approved, that would leave approximately $21,500 left in the, in the incentive grant fund. Julie has been, has been in business for 23 years on Main Street. She also has two upper-story apartments, and this need came about due to 114 coming down. So in order to secure Julie's building and to fix the facade on the, I'm not going with directions, the east side, is over $84,000, and her request amount is for $12,500, which is the maximum for a two-story building on Main Street for the facade. The incentive grant committee discussed the request and felt that it complied with the, with the guidelines of the facade grant, and we would like to ask the City Council's support to approve the amount of $12,500.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think you're setting a really good example, because I've been after the one on Center Street and Main to get something done with it, and you're doing, the other building came down, and you're right out fixing it up, so I think that's a really neat deal. She's setting a great example for the rest of them.
Thank you. The foundation, we didn't have much choice. It, it definitely needed to be done immediately with, concerning the weather.
I certainly support this as we encourage our businesses to, to get back to the, back where they need to be after, after the storm. I know you've been operating and all, but this will certainly give an updated look to your, to your facility, and I certainly support that we, that we put this forward.
Great. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the Council? Are there any public comments or questions? Okay. It's been moved and seconded, and roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2019-337, endorsing community catalyst building remediation grant application for 35 North Center Street.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
This is actually the fifth catalyst full application that we've had the committee review and make a recommendation on funding 175,000 of a remaining 350,000 left to allocate for Garrett and Danny Goodman. They will be rebuilding the flying elbow, and I believe I have a concept that I can pull up, although I know Michelle's going to say that's not the sign that they will end up having. They have purchased multiple lots. They purchased 7.5 East State Street, which we provided some funding for to assist with the demolition, and then they purchased, I think 30, it's 31 North Center Street. That was the old grocery store that collapsed during the tornado. So they have a, a very big footprint there with, which they hope to build what you see on the screen right now. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
This is another project that I would support. I know that they have followed the guidelines for the catalyst grant, and the committee felt that this was certainly something, because of its location, is in a prime spot, as well as they are making the effort to improve what they had previously before the tornado. The fact that they'd only been open a few months before the tornado, they never, or it was a, quite a startling thing, but the, the fact that they're willing to expand and take on this project, the committee felt that this was a great, a great catalyst for that area of town.
Do you know, or doesn't, maybe Ms. Steiner knows, how much is left after this project?
There will be, if, if you approve this resolution, we'll send it on to the state as they'll have to score. I don't have their scoring from the previous one, so as everything sits right now, that would leave $175,000 remaining to be allocated.
Are there any other questions? Are there any public questions? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a motion for, to approve Resolution 2019-338, setting the reserve and approving the form of bid for the auction of 109 South First Avenue.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I was able to talk with Fred Van Meter, and he, he did a review of the building and came down from what he'd put in his initial proposal letter and believes that $80,000 is a reserve. The form of bid was basically the, that he recommended was your standard purchase agreement, real estate purchase agreement, and so there were no disagreements there. So that's what's before you tonight. As I talked to Fred, I, I said, given the holidays and everything, we'd probably be looking to do something in, sometime in February as far as the auction.
Any questions? Any public questions? All right. We have a motion to approve. Oh, yes.
Marking 1007 South Avenue. My foot's asleep, sorry. Does this include leaving the generator and the boiler in the building?
Yeah. This is the property, as is ultimately with an auction format, there was not a great way to, to do that. That's something that, depending on what the buyer wishes to do with the property, we can always have negotiations with them after, after a sale on that portion.
Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2019-339, approving loan agreement and authorizing the issuance of $5,065,000 in sewer, in sewer revenue refunding bond, bonds, Series 2020.
So moved. Second.
They're moved and seconded. Discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Okay. Over the course of the last several months, we talked about taking our 2012 and 2014 sewer revenue bonds and basically refinancing them. So that's what we're doing. Spear Financial made their presentation to you at the last meeting about the interest rates, and the winner was JP Morgan Chase. So the one, the resolution that you have in your packet has now just recently been updated prior to the meeting. Our bond attorney, Bob Johnston, got a call from JP Morgan Chase, who wanted a few tweaks in languages, and so that is what you have before you. I will read it for the public's sake. Based on requests from the attorney for JP Morgan Chase Bank, I have prepared the revised version of the bond issuance resolution that is attached to this email. The only changes are the addition of language in three places that states bond proceeds will be used to pay issuance costs, and a technical correction in two places that explains how an early redemption of a portion of the bond would be handled. So we're recommending that you approve the authorization and issuance of these sewer revenue bonds.
Thank you. Any questions from the Council? Are there any public questions? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Okay. We're down to discussion items, and we have one item for discussion tonight, a request for a new construction incentive for Thompson True Value.
Yes, I'll do some introduction. We do have Dave Thompson here as well, and I don't know if Councilmember Lamer will want to make some comments, but Mr. Thompson and Councilmember Lamer came to see me to talk about his new construction project, which is not eligible for the $50,000 new construction incentive, the way it was written. So he's eligible in terms of the criteria that was approved, but the timing is what is the problem, in that the Council did not pass this until the 14th day of October, and his store was completely constructed and open by then. So the, the best way for him to make a case to you is to come forward to the Council tonight and to make that case.
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2019-339, approving loan agreement and authorizing the issuance of $5,065,000 in sewer, in sewer revenue refunding bond, bonds, Series 2020.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Okay, over the course of the last several months, we talked about taking our 2012 and 2014 sewer revenue bonds and basically refinancing them. So, that's what we're doing. Spear Financial made their presentation to you at the last meeting about the interest rates, and the winner was JP Morgan Chase. So, the one, the resolution that you have in your packet has now just recently been updated prior to the meeting. Our bond attorney, Bob Justin, got a call from JP Morgan Chase who wanted a, a few tweaks in languages, and so that is what you have before you. I will read it for the public's sake. Based on requests from the attorney for JP Morgan Chase Bank, I have prepared the revised version of the bond issuance resolution that is attached to this email. The only changes are the addition of language in three places that states bond proceeds will be used to pay issuance costs, and a technical correction in two places that explains how an early redemption of a portion of the bond would be handled. So, we're recommending that you approve the authorization and issuance of these sewer revenue bonds.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Are there any public questions? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to discussion items, and we have one item for discussion tonight. A request for a new construction incentive for Thompson True Value.
Yes, I'll do some introduction. We do have Dave Thompson here as well, and I don't know if Councilmember Weirin will want to make some comments, but Mr. Thompson and Councilmember Weirin came to see me to talk about his new construction project, which is not eligible for the $50,000 new construction incentive, the way it was written. So, he's eligible in terms of the criteria that was approved, but the timing is what is the problem, in that the council did not pass this until the 14th day of October, and his store was completely constructed and opened by then. So, the, the best way for him to make a case to you is to come forward to the council tonight and to make that case.
Okay.
Is it your turn?
Yes.
Okay.
It's my turn. I asked to have this item put onto the, the council agenda. I felt like that, I understand that, that under the requirements, the way they're written now, the committee determined that new construction would not be eligible for any assistance from the city like we do for reconstruction of older buildings. And I felt like when somebody was willing to spend a couple million dollars to build a new building downtown, the least we could do is give them the same consideration that we give a building that's being reconstructed. So, that's why I ask, and we approved a few months, a few council meetings ago, the, the resolution that allowed new construction to be treated the same as reconstruction of buildings. I think Mr. Thompson has proven to Marshalltown that he's going to stay here, and he's willing to spend a lot of cash to have a nice building and keep it downtown. Therefore, I would like to see us proceed with an amendment or a, whatever it takes to allow him to, his application to be considered, and for the city to, to pay him for some facade and, and sprinkler upgrades, which he did in conjunction with the, the rules and regulations that are in place. So, that's why it's on the agenda. If I'm re, I, I guess I'm requesting that we find a way to amend or, or some way to, to offer him or to make him eligible for those funds.
Right, according to the memo, it looks like we would just need to make a resolution.
Yeah, it would need to come forward as a resolution on the next meeting because it isn't eligible under the program as it's set up right now.
I would support making a resolution. This is a great addition to our downtown. It's beautiful. It, I mean, it has gone beyond, I think, what our expectations were. And Dave has, has for years been a good downtown citizen and, and a, a, an employer in the area, so I would certainly support this in making a resolution to bring it forward.
Is that a motion, Susan?
I would love to make that motion. I move that we make a resolution to allow for the incentive, new building incentive for Dave Thompson's hard, True Value Hardware Store.
I'd second that.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second, and this is to put it on the agenda probably at the next meeting.
January 13th, yes.
January 13th, okay. And I just have a question about the funding. Can you remind me of the funding for this program?
Yes, so the council designated $250,000 in council-designated local options sales tax. There are, with Garrett's project tonight, and then with Jose Regalado's project before. Those are two that if their catalyst, catalyst grants are approved, we would include that funding in that language in those agreements for the other funding. So, so currently, there